There you can start.
Good.
Okay, great. Um, I'll call this town council meeting to order our February sixteenth meeting. We will, uh, recite the pledge of allegiance now, please. Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
United States.
To the republic. One nation.
One nation.
God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty, justice, and all.
Let's just fall.
Thank you. A little bit difficult on the, on the WebEx meeting. No disrespect by us sitting down, but. Um. Uh, roll call.
Councilor Dela, Chris Jackson.
Here.
Mary Kaczynski.
Here.
Councilor Luddy.
Here.
Councilor Peonesa.
Here.
Councilor Russell.
Here.
Councilor Yonaga.
Here.
Councilor Vich. I don't know if, um, if Donna's on or not. All right, Mary, you have a form.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and start with our, uh, audience of citizens. If, uh, anyone is, uh, has called in, uh, and wishes to speak, address the council, now would be your time. Anyone out there? And, uh,
Yep. Mayor Chris Edge, uh, just wanted to speak briefly. Uh, we're gonna be kicking off a new promotion next Thursday called Berlin Bingo. The idea's gonna be essentially to get bingo. Um, there'll be a bingo card essentially in every Berlin citizen that you'll be receiving next week. In each of the twenty-four boxes, there'll be a different task to do to support a business in town. So that'll be out. The good thing is there are prizes. So keep an eye on that. And if you get a chance when you see it, tell everybody you can think of. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Great idea. Great programs for our businesses. Anyone else? One, twice, three times. Hearing no one else. We will go ahead and close our audience of citizens and move on to our meeting agenda. Starting with our consent agenda tonight. Um, we've got, uh, four, four items on our consent agenda. Donations, uh, ten dollars, uh, appropriate funds to the police canine program, expenditure account, um, accept donations to the Berlin Animal Control. Donation account for seventy dollars and items valued at eighty-five dollars. Uh, except monetary donations totaling a hundred fifty dollars for the Berlin Equimora Library. Deposit a hundred fifty into the library agent's account to purchase children's books in memory of Charlie McCourt. And to authorize Berlin's social and youth services to apply to Amplify Inc. for grant in the amount of five thousand dollars in the Connecticut State Opioid Response Initiative Funds. Authorize the town manager to accept the grant on behalf of the town to sign any contracts and agreements pertaining to the grant. The, uh, upon receipt, they'll be deposited into the state opioid response grant revenue account and, uh, subject to, uh, approval, appropriation approval by the Board of Finance. Those are the four items on our consent agenda. Any, uh, questions on those? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Luddy here. I make a motion to accept the four items on the consent agenda tonight.
Second. On that. Second, okay, thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions? If not, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carries. Onto new business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
Hi, Rock.
The first item on the agenda is, uh, update from Chairman Joe Budrowski on the senior housing project. Joe, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, councilmen, uh, audience, good evening. I came before you tonight because back in December, we posted a application, or an RFP, for a consultant for the community development block grant. In January, we received, uh, five responses to the RFP. My consultants reviewed the five responses, we excluded three. The responses has not been, um, sufficiently experienced to move forward on the projects. I left this with two, uh, consultants. The first is helping enterprises. They are out of Enfield, Connecticut. David Bodo was the principal. And, uh, the other is A and E Services out of Woket. And, um, Peter Testa is the principal of that organization. Uh, Peter Testa you're familiar with because he worked on, uh, three of our community development block grants in the past. Uh, Arosh sent an email question, or requesting some information pertinent to the community development block grant. So I will answer the questions that he, um, requested some additional information on. The entire project was roughly eighteen million dollars. Out of that eighteen million dollars, there's various different tranches which we're looking to fund. The tranche being a portion of the financing package. So we're looking at, um, you know, four percent tax credit. We're looking at, uh, DOH, uh, funding. We're looking at, uh, private lending. Uh, we're also looking at the community development block grant. In our meeting with DOH back in, uh, December, they stated that they might be getting money from the federal government. They'll allow them to increase the amount of the award from one point five million to four million dollars. Uh, in the past, for new development, that one point five million dollars would go towards infrastructure costs. Um, and the infrastructure cost being extension of water mains, sewer main, gas main, electrical lines, things like that. If the one point five million dollars stays as, as it was in the past, then we assume that entirety of that one point five million is gonna go towards, um, infrastructure costs. If they increase the four million dollars, to four million dollars, um, then they'll have to issue guidance as to what that money could be used for moving forward. Uh, they have not done so. Normally, they issue the guidance at the end of January. Uh, they have not issued guidance as of yet as to, um, what the community development block grant's gonna look like for twenty twenty-one. Nor have they, um, you know, said what the amount is gonna be. So we're basically assuming it's gonna be one point five million and for infrastructure costs as it has in the past. Uh, there would be no cost to the town for this consultant. The consultant is paid for out of the proceeds of the grant. It's budgeted, budgeted for within the grant. The consultant would be responsible for creating the application, uh, forwarding the application to DOH, monitoring the execution of that and then, um, finalizing that grant once it's been expended and reporting that back to DOH. Um, because of the program requirements, the town is the contracting agency. So as in the past, we've done about four of these through the town of Berlin. As in the past, basically, the town is the one that sets up this agreement with the consultant on the behalf of the Berlin Housing Authority. Uh, the housing authority will work with the consultant to execute the one point five million dollar grant application. And I don't anticipate any, uh, town resources being allocated toward this other than the council meeting and maybe some, um, you know, some help from the town on an issue, which I can't imagine would be that great. Um, you know, maybe looking at utilities or something along those lines. Um, but for the top, I can't really think of anything right now that the town would be involved with this, uh, community development block grant. Um, let's see. And that's pretty much it. All the costs related to the community development block grant will be funded by the grant itself. So there's no cost to the town, there's no cost to the housing authority.
Okay, so we're, we're, thank you, Joe. We're still on track, right, for where are we at with the rest of the funding? We're still.
Yes. So we're in the process of finalizing the four percent tax credit application. Uh, that was supposed to go on Friday, but we're waiting on some information from one of our consultants. I didn't need to refresh the development studies. So, uh, that did not arrive on Friday's hoped for. So we're, you know, hopefully this Friday, we'll get that in for the, for the four percent tax credit. Uh, we have a consultant on board, uh, and Yana out of Meriden. Uh, they're gonna basically put together the four percent tax credit, which they've been working on. And they're arranging pre-development monies and they're also arranging other funds, uh, that are out there, including the HUD two oh two program, which has just been adjusted to, you know, allow for senior housing. So we're hoping that we can take advantage of that as well.
Okay. So what's our, what's the timeframe on all this again? What, I know you, I think you told us last time, but what's the?
So basically, the four percent tax credits as of right. So we make the application, the state DOH reviews the application. Um, we might have to provide additional information based on their, it's an underwriting process similar to how you go about getting a loan. So, you know, they look at our project, they look at the construction cost, they make sure that our numbers make sense. And then they fund the four percent tax credit. After that, um, like I said, the community development block grant monies, those are normally, in a normal year, non-COVID year, those are due in March. Um, like I said, normally, at the end of January, they have a meeting, issue the requirements for their community development block grant application. And, you know, it's off to the races for March. Um, since they haven't had that meeting yet, they haven't issued guidance yet. Um, I don't know if the March application for community development block grant is gonna be, uh, valid or if it's gonna be pushed later into the year. Um, I'm sure there's also some issues with the, with HUD and how much money they're gonna give the states for the community development block grant program. So, um, hopefully by March, we'll have that application in. And then, um, we have Section eight project vouchers that we're gonna get. Um, so there's, um, another pool of money through the community housing trust fund that we'll be accessing. And, um, again, that's gonna wait until the four percent tax credits in place and the project vouchers are officially in place.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Uh, other questions for Joe, council members?
I do have, like I said, out of the five applications, we had, uh, two that we decided to bring with the council. Out of that one, we are, uh, those two, we are recommending the Housing Enterprises, Inc. as being the, uh, consultant that we recommend the town to approve. Um, they have a development background, which is what we're looking for in this specific project. Um, this is not an existing building. This is the new development, so they have particular expertise in that field. And that's why, uh, our consultant has decided that they will be the top choice for the housing authority.
Okay. All right. Anything else from anyone? Anything you guys wanna add? Questions? Jeff, attorney, counselor, Danafrio, we're good?
I'm fine. I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Arosh, anything?
Just, uh, curious, Joe, one point five from CDBG. You're thinking about four from Department of Housing. I'm trying to get to the eighteen. So which leaves, uh.
I don't have here in front of me, but I can get you a detailed, uh, financial pro forma.
Yeah. Okay. When you get a chance, we can send that, that'll be good so that we have some, uh, knowledge as to where the pieces are coming from. How do you get to eighteen?
Pretty much, it hasn't changed since December when we brought you the last one. But, uh, it's still the same pro forma we've been talking about.
Uh, okay.
You know, like I said, the, the parts of it might change a little bit, but, uh, for the most part, it gets you eighteen.
But you, you do have a roadmap to get to eighteen, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you have that. It's that pro forma, the budget that we sent to you.
All right.
I'm thinking back to December.
Got it. If you.
Send it.
Can you send it again, please? That, that'll be great.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Not a problem.
Okay. If there's no other questions, uh, we, uh, appreciate the update, Joe. Thank you. And, uh, please keep, uh, pushing forward as fast as you can. Appreciate it.
I will. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, agenda item number two is a medical insurance coalition agreement. And I have Denise here to, uh, give you an update on that.
Hi, Denise.
Hi, everyone. How are you doing? So as you, you may or may not know, it was two thousand and nine, uh, when the union presidents at the town got together to put this benefits committee together. Um, at that time, we had six different unions and a representative from top management on board. And in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, we had six different plan designs for our health insurance. Each one bargained within each of the union contracts. So every year, we were bargaining with a different union for different healthcare, um, plan designs. Uh, in two thousand and nine, we got together with all the presidents and we kind of collaborated and decided that it would be much easier and there were more cost savings initiatives if we could pull everybody together into one plan design. So this is very unique to Berlin. I'm not aware of any other town in the state of Connecticut that is actually doing this with their unions. Um, but our groups get together, we have, it's usually the president, if not the president, a, a designated representative who comes and meets with this benefits committee. Uh, we do meet once a month. We have our broker in those committee meetings. He walks us through different, um, options for cost savings initiatives. We've looked at, you know, prescription drug plans. We've looked at managed care plans. We've looked at eliminating the PPO and just offering the HSA. And we talk about the pros and cons of each of that and what the actual cost implications are for the town. Um, we had three coalition agreements to date. Our current one is expiring at the end of June. And what we're presenting in front of you today is a five-year agreement. All of the union presidents have voted and, um, signed off on this. We're looking to the council to also approve it. Um, but essentially, right now, in today's benefit, employees have the option of choo- choosing a PPO, which is a co-pay plan, which means you go to the doctor, you pay your co-pay, you go to the hospital, you pay your co-pay, and everything else is covered through the insurance. That is considered the town's Cadillac Plan. And if most of you are in the private industry, you know those types of plans are no longer available, or at least aren't the, the priority plan. Um, so over the last coalition agreement, that plan was moved to a higher cost for employees because that is the Cadillac Plan. Um, the other option our staff have is a high deductible health savings account. Um, this plan has been around with the town, um, for at least eleven or twelve years. The majority of our staff are in this plan now. And what it does is it offers a two thousand or four thousand dollar deductible. Once the employee meets the deductible, then everything is covered in full except for prescriptions. So in the plan talks for the new five-year agreement, uh, the group has agreed to make some changes to the HSA plan. Um, and those are increasing premium cost share for employees. This will actually be for both plans. Um, a half a percent in each of the first four years. Um, increasing the HSA deductible in the second year from two thousand four thousand to twenty-two fifty, forty-five hundred. And then in the final year, moving it to twenty-five, five thousand. Um, and then we've also, within our coalition agreement, we have two other attachments to it. One is our wellness program. We're very proud of our wellness program. We put this in place about eight years ago. Um, and essentially, all we require is that each of the members get their annual physicals. And as long as they provide us a signed form from their doctor that says they have completed all of their age-appropriate, um, health screenings, we give them a wellness premium. And that premium can either be deposited into their paycheck or deposited into their HSA account. Um, and right now, it's a two hundred dollar single, three hundred dollar family and five hundred dollars, I'm sorry, five hundred dollar family, three hundred dollar couple, two hundred dollar single. Um, the other piece that's added on to that is for staff who do not elect to participate in our health insurance program. We have what's called the waiver of premium or in lieu of benefit. Um, that has, that was around and was included in all of the bargaining agreements. So when we negotiated it out of the bargaining agreements, we kept it here with the coalition agreement. Um, essentially, if you do not take health coverage with the town right now and you're a family eligible, you get a twenty-five hundred dollar refund from the town. If you're a couple, it's eighteen hundred, and if you're single, it's five hundred. So two of the changes that we've made with those two add-ons is our wellness benefit. We're no longer requiring dependent children to submit the form for their annual physicals. Um, we have heard from staff that those who have kids in college have a real hard time doing it because the kids are away. And we also have heard, my kids are going to the physical every year for school. Why do I also have to do it for this benefit? And industry-wide, a wellness program doesn't usually include having the underage children having those physicals. So we've taken that away to make it a little easier administratively and also for our staff, um, to get that benefit. And then on the in lieu of piece, um, we are looking to remove, uh, single coverage. Uh, the assumption on that is if you are a, an employee of the town and you only need single coverage, chances are, if you're not taking it, the only reason is because you're under twenty-six and still on your parents' plan. So when we looked at that, we were actually paying a five hundred dollar premium to someone who wasn't ever gonna not take our coverage anyway. Um, so we've removed the single option on the waiver premium. We've also removed the duplicates. So right now, we have a handful of staff who both the husband and the wife, um, are either part of the town plan or part of the board plan. So we have, let's say, one spouse is on the town, one spouse is on the Board of Ed, and they go on the Board of Ed insurance, but then they get the waiver premium from the town side. So essentially, we're giving them a waiver premium, but they're still on the town's health insurance plan. So we've removed the, the ability for folks to do that. Um, and those are the, the major changes. We worked very closely with all of the union presidents. Like I said, they've all agreed to this. We think that it's a very comprehensive plan, but still offers the cost savings initiatives that the town is looking for. Um, maybe not saving money, but reducing the height of the curve because the healthcare costs keep going up year after year. We feel like these are ways to keep that down.
Okay. Thanks, Denise, and I appreciate all the hard work that you and the, uh, committee puts together. We know it's very difficult to control the, these healthcare costs, but I know we're doing the best we can. So appreciate that. Uh, any questions? For Denise? Hearing none. Um, we will go ahead and, uh, take a motion on this.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilor Luddy here. I move to authorize the town manager to enter into the medical insurance coalition bargaining agreement for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, so second. Second. Okay. Uh, any other, uh, comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Right. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise.
Good night.
Good night. I know.
The item number three is to purchase tires partially utilizing state of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contract, Piscilia twenty, twenty-one. Jim Simons is on the line.
Hey, Jim. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
So, actually, we thought this went through back in August, but the finance department says, no, we never got it up there to get it through. So here we are, we're almost at ten thousand dollars. It's time to get it through right now. And, uh, basically, what this is, is just our yearly, uh, purchasing of tires for vehicles within the town, both police, fire, or not, not fire, because we already did that one. Police, highway, grounds, administrative cars, things like that.
Okay. Good. All right. So, uh, any questions for Jim?
None here.
Hearing none, we will go ahead and take a motion on this.
Okay. I will, uh, make a motion to approve the purchase of tires and related components using the state of Connecticut, uh, Department of Administrative Services contract number eighteen PSX zero 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 twenty-two for Goodyear tires and off-brand tires for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Any second on that?
A second to motion.
Okay. Any other, uh, questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Thank, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Good night.
You too.
Good night.
The item number four, the modification of the term of Berlin tax abatement policy. I have, uh, Chris Edge to walk us through that. Chris?
Thank you, Arosh. Um, yes, we had, uh, put the new tax abatement policy in place, or should say the new level of, uh, ten years for a twelve and a half million dollar investment, including mixed use. Uh, that was largely to help to incentivize two developments which are now underway. One of which is Turnpike Ridge next to Accura. The other is the Newport project, which will be breaking ground hopefully in the next month or so by the train station. Uh, we looked at this, uh, as a team, um, Arosh, myself, Jeff Danafrio, Jim Mahoney, and looked at it and realized that we're probably, at this point, have gotten the projects we'd like. Projects we're looking from here largely commercial is a minor piece of it. Commercial was a big piece of both of those. So what we're doing is recommending a couple of changes to our tax abatement policy. A couple of them that I'll mention to you, they're important. Um, the first is it gives the town council the ability to look at the merits of a project. Um, at present, there's really no language in there to give this body the ability to say, yes, we like it, no, we don't, and look at the overall benefit. Uh, the second piece is removing all tax abatements on residential portion of properties. So that piece, again, we had done that both on the Turnpike Ridge and Newport. Um, this will get rid of it. Additionally, we are changing the ten-year abatement schedule so it more lines up with our existing five and seven year. Essentially, it goes down from seventy percent in year one down to twenty percent in year ten. So it really fits in much better with what we currently have in place with our five and seven year. The last piece is, we have a paragraph that's in here, which will allow someone who's currently, or if someone is in the middle of planning and zoning proof and for a project, to still be eligible for this. Um, but they have to hit certain milestones. Uh, it needs to be at least ten percent of it commercial. Uh, they need to hit certain things within one, two, and three years in order to be eligible. And so again, because this one's already in the mix and they've been discussing it with us, uh, we have this paragraph in there, but we think this is a good change, still keeps the town competitive, um, but takes out the residential piece. Um, we did just have a project that came through. It was all residential, they didn't come in for any tax abatements. So looking at it and realizing that moving forward, tax abatements on residential aren't really needed in a community like Berlin. Jim, I don't know if you have anything to add?
I'm good.
You're good. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Anybody else, questions for Chris? Seems like the, uh, update makes sense and, uh, certainly, uh, we've had some great success with our tax abatement policy. It's, uh, good that we're looking to tweak it a little bit. Hope you make it that much better.
Absolutely.
If there's no uh, other questions on this one, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Luddy here. I will make a motion to amend the Berlin tax abatement policy to delete the abatement for residential portion of mixed-use projects and to reduce the amount and percentage of annual abatement, abatements on the ten-year tax abatement schedule for projects, uh, with real property improvements greater than twelve point five million. The graph that will allow projects to have applied for planning and zoning commission approval to be eligible to apply abatement pursuant to the tax abatement policy that exists prior to the changes proposed, uh, herein and to add language to clarify that granting of each tax abatement is at the discretion of the town council of, if this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Councilor Penestra, second that.
Any other, uh, comments or questions on this? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion, uh, carries.
Right. Thank you. Agenda item number five, the tax abatement for Newport, Ninety-three and nine thirteen Farmington Avenue, LLC. Chris?
I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that one. Yes. So, um, as you know, we, we approved the abatement for Newport for a project over twelve and a half million dollars. And we started working on, you know, the agreement. And this is the first time we really had a significant project that's being phased in. So we were trying to fit how that, how our agreement, you know, fits in with, uh, with our policy. We identified a couple of issues. One is, um, that in the first phase, this is a project over twelve and a half million. And the first phase of the project is, is the building at Nine Steel Boulevard, which will be over four million, which will hit our three million dollar threshold mark for seven-year abatement, but not hit the twelve and a half million. And then their plan is to, and that also in eight sixty-one, Farmington Avenue Rehab is in the first phase. Their plan for the second phase is to do the, uh, ten Steel Boulevard building, which is planned as a thirteen thousand square foot, foot, commercial building. And the third is the sixty-unit apartment building at fifty-five Steel Boulevard. So the second issue was, uh, in relation, you know, so the first issue was the twelve and a half million dollar threshold. Before they meet the twelve and a half million dollar threshold, um, how, what abatement schedule should we put them on? So what we worked out is that we would start them on the seven-year abatement schedule. So what we worked out is that we would start them on the seven-year abatement schedule because they'll hit, hit that, you know, three million dollar threshold in the first phase of the project. And then when they meet the twelve and a half million dollar threshold, we'll shift them up to the next year on ten million, on the, on the ten-year schedule. So in other words, if they, if they did, you know, two years and, two years in, they finished, they finished another phase of the project, got over twelve and a half million in the third, in the third year, they'd shift to the ten-year schedule. So the other, the other issue was that, you know, the the percentage commercial, and as Chris indicated in the previous item, these, this project had a significant commercial percentage, it was over twenty, over twenty percent commercial, but we have a significant residential phase, which is the sixty-unit apartment building at fifty-five Steel Boulevard. And we were, in going through the scenarios, we said, well, what if, what if Newport decides to do that building first? Then, then the commercial percentage that they would have completed would go down significantly in the overall project. So what we worked out is that we would not start the, not start the, the tax abatement on the residential building at fifty-five Steel Boulevard until the building at nine thirteen, excuse me, at ten Steel Boulevard was, was completed, which is the significant commercial building. So they might have to wait a little while before they get the abatement on the fifty-five Steel Boulevard if the phasing changes. The planned phasing that they have now is that the ten Steel Boulevard will be second, and so that won't be an issue. But if they do change, change the phasing, this will, you know, provide a way to transition, transition it in. And if they do, if they do change anything with the project in terms of nine thirteen Bull, or, excuse me, ten Steel Boulevard, Steel Boulevard, and shift the commercial percentage, they'll have to back in and get your blessing. So, so we think this is a fair way to handle it within the existing policy. So we're right, make, we wanted to kind of walk, walk through with the council because it's a little more complicated than just passing, passing the twelve and a half year, but we want to make sure we're all on the same page. So this is our recommendation.
Okay, Jim? Yes, no, it's not complicated at all. No, it's a little, it's a little tricky, but, you know, we understand the concept here and seems like it's a fair one, certainly for the town and to our developers that have chosen Berlin as well. So other comments or questions from the council? Okay, we've got quite the explanation in our packet, so following along with you, Jim, we've been following along with it. So if there's other comments or questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Council Luddy here. I move to revise, move to revise the approved schedule for tax abatement for Newport, nine oh three, nine to nine thirteen Farmington Avenue LLC for their mixed-use project at eight sixty-one Farmington Avenue and nine ten twenty-nine and fifty-five Steel Boulevard, such that Phase One, including nine Steel Boulevard and eight sixty-one Farmington Avenue, will begin on the seven-year tax abatement schedule of a fifty percent in year one, fifty percent in year two, forty percent in year three, forty percent in year four, thirty percent in year five, twenty percent in year six, and ten percent in year seven. Also, the project will remain on the seven-year tax abatement schedule until the twelve point five million investment threshold is met, at which time the project will move to the appropriate year in a ten-year schedule for the commercial portion of the project of seventy percent for years one through three, sixty percent for years four through eight, and fifty percent years for nine and ten, and a five-year schedule for residential uses of eighty percent in year one, seventy percent in year two, sixty, sixty percent in year three, fifty percent in year four, and forty percent in year five. Also, the five-year tax abatement for the sixty-unit residential building at fifty-five Steel Boulevard will not commence until the commercial building at ten Steel Boulevard is developed. And finally, as stated in a previous town council action, the tax abatement agreement shall not be subject to Newport not receiving housing tax credits for the project from other state or federal sources. And that's it.
That's quite, quite the motion. Second on that?
Also, Penasai, seconded.
Okay. Any other questions on this or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it, Chris and Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you all, have a great day, and thank you to Jeff as well.
Yep, thank you for helping out too, as always. All right. Where are we, where are we at? Well, we had appointments now already? Okay. What do we have here?
The only one that you have, Mayor, is Don Tisemski, back on the Youth Service Board, Advisory Board.
We have a vacancy, obviously, for that, right?
Yeah, he'll, it's going to be appointment for him, but yes.
Okay. Okay. So go ahead and nominations for the Youth Board?
Okay, I'll make a nomination to put Don Tisemski back on the Youth of Zeit Services Advisory Board.
Okay. Any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the nominations. All those in favor of Don? Aye.
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 Close? Okay. Welcome, Don, back. Town managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few items to update you. The first one is a follow-up item from a couple of meetings ago. Council Luddy had asked for status of the savings of the energy project that we did. We are in the second year of that. Naresco, they do a complete analysis each year. I attached the two reports, it's like hundred and twenty, right? We just saw so each year. But I also send a summary that shows what the annual savings are, and based on what they said, the guaranteed savings against the guaranteed savings. So according to the report and the methodology they use and the measurements they have, remember, we, this is also part of the credits that they're getting from EverSource, we are getting some savings. If you, if you look at the work that was done, the, the very last one, where they talk about LED, LED streetlight project, those savings actually kick in at a higher rate after year five, because the first five years, you're pretty much amortizing the cost, because built into the cost of the project as well. So the first few years, it, that's why it shows as a cost, because we're amortizing that cost over the five-year period. But after that, it kicks in just from that around another two hundred and fifty thousand or so each for the next, I think, when I looked at the report, it's fairly close to almost year, twenty years, nineteen years. So it appears to be doing what it's doing, but very soon, right now, Doug, Kevin, and I are talking with different groups to look at some initiatives for the high school especially, and for the town, for LED lighting and controls. The reason that is, EverSource has some very good credit programs, and the payback is two to three years. It's really remarkable. And that's why, if you probably drive by some of those town buildings, they're a little like a airport even at three o'clock in the morning, because the, the lights don't go off unless somebody goes and turns them off. And that's, that's big money, if you can have motion-sensitive controls built in there. So we want to look into that, and hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll have something, or maybe at least by the end of spring, to have a program in place to try and address that, and work it through the appropriate committees and bring it to you. Any questions on that, on the energy base?
No, I just want to say thanks for the information, Roche.
Sure.
You know, this was one of the first big things that, when I first got on the council, that came out, and we haven't seen any kind of updates.
Yeah.
Since, so it was very informative, and I only made it through part one of the information you gave, there was a lot there to go through. But, no, it's, it's good to see that, that it was working.
Yeah. Thank you. We'll, we'll try to keep you updated every year, this way, ongoing. Couple of other.
Roche? Can I ask you a question on that? Just my annual appeal to include the fields and the parks on the LEDs.
Yes. Yeah. So we, we did bring it up, Peter, the, the dollars are not big in terms of savings, so well, well, it's on our list. The, the companies that try to hit the big dollar item so that you get a bigger ROI, but it's on the list, we'll certainly keep it on there. Couple of other updates, the vaccine, everybody's interested about the vaccine, and if you go to the town website, we have more information about, a link to the state website, don't get excited, they want everyone over sixty-five to sign up and register, but we're still getting through the over seventy-fives. There's a lot of demand, but the supply is not quite there. But, but there's a process in place for everyone to go and sign up for that. Also, we have a link to a website and a text alert system. I actually signed up for that, it's pretty darn good. You sign up for that, you get text alerts directly from the state to your phone, saying where to go, where can you go, where can you sign up, more information and links to different places. So we put that on the town's Facebook page and also on the website. All we can do is to get people to go out there and sign up and get the information. Good news, today, we completed over fifty vaccines at the senior center with the help of the Central Connecticut Health District. That was very successful, I'm pleased to say that Tina and Matt Adishu coordinated the whole thing. Central Connecticut Health District got about fifty vaccines for each town, they've been doing all of their four towns, and I'm told, good news, next week, we'll get a seventy vaccines. So with our systems in place, the purpose here is to try and get the vaccines to folks who can't get to a destination or don't have anyone to drive them around. So I think it's really helpful, and Tina has a, you know, whole, she has the whole list prepared, ready to go whenever the vaccines are available. So that continues as we speak. Any questions on the vaccine? Great. So I'm, I'm going to talk a little bit about the DEEP grant, Department of Economic and Environmental Protection Grant, the two point seven million dollars that the December twenty twenty bond commission meeting was awarded to the Town of Berlin. And then, you know, just to remind you, this, this, the patio field, Sage One restrooms and storage facility, Sage Park entrance, and Skully scoreboard. The tricky part is, the funding was awarded to Berlin, but the grant application needs to be developed and approved by, you know, typically, the state grants are initiated by the staff in response to an invitation to bid on it. The money is there, we just have to go through the process and apply for it, for these projects that are already assigned. So what we have done, the town staff met with various groups who are interested in this, especially only with the staff, and what we have done is we have assigned what I call champions or owners for each of these projects, so that they could start working on the application and start applying for it. But we are waiting for the DEEP to send us the parameters on how to apply for it, that's one. We also felt it was good to have an oversight committee to look at all of these projects because they're bearing interest on how to spend the money. So what they have recommended is a representative from the Parks and Rec, Board of Ed, Public Building Commission, and the Playing Fields Committee. They've reached out to all those committees and asked them to send us a representative so that it is managed well and looking at the best interest of the town. So any questions on that?
No. Thank you, Roche, I'm glad we're, I know that's a difficult process to go through, so obviously, we want to get the money as fast as possible and get going, but it's always cumbersome, though.
It's a really exciting project, it's, you know, I'm really thankful and appreciative of the former speaker getting the money for the Town of Berlin. You know, it's two point seven million dollars, it's, it's nice. But there's a process we have to get through to get the money, which we will do.
As well.
Another update is, last Thursday, we had a joint meeting of the Town Council and the Gulf Commission. I, I thought it was a good start. We talked about the objectives of the meeting, and we're trying to, you know, do what's right for the town. We all know where we are, what the, what the current charter says. So we decided to look at, look at various options as an opportunity for everyone to comment and give remarks, you know, the current ordinance states that the expenses need to match by revenues. At the meeting, I'm giving the, you know, thirty-second soundbite here, that we agreed to look at the, originally, when it was created, if they have any conditions about how the golf course can be used, any restrictions. We talked about pros and cons of selling, pros and cons of, you know, a self-sufficient model, managing the golf course on its own bottom line, and also, we want to talk about various management options. So it's a lot to discuss, and we decided we'll take one or two at a time, and we agreed at the following meeting to go back to the nineteen seventy records, to look at what the language says, as all of you may know, half the money, fifty percent of the money came from the federal government, twenty-five percent came from the state, and the remaining twenty-five from the Town of Berlin. So it, we want to be transparent, it's an open discussion, and I thought it was a good start, but there's work to be done. But there is time, as all of you know, we were able to come up with a budget and a fee structure for this year that would keep us in line with the current ordinance. Any questions or comments on that?
No. When, when do we, when do we plan on activating?
Well, we said three to four weeks, but other things going on too at the same time, so let's try to keep to that timeframe.
Sure.
Talking of other things, we are finalizing our budget that we plan to submit to the Board of Finance by the end of this month, that's required to do that. And the Board of Ed has finalized their budget and already sent it. So Kevin and I are just going through the town budget and trying to put the final tweaks on it, and then we'll have that ready for the Board of Finance by the end of the month, so we'll be in good shape for that. Just FYI, speaking of budget, the, the town managers of Newington, Cromwell, Withersfield, Rocker Hill, and Berlin, we have agreed to meet once a month virtually. They all agree that they're having some challenges with the budgets and financing everything. The idea is for us to try and see if we can partner on certain services or products and see if we can do some cost-saving, cost-saving initiatives. Conversation's going on, but it's, it's difficult, as all of you know, nobody wants to give in anything, everybody wants to take, just human nature. And, but, but I'm glad we are talking, because I, I think, especially in State of Connecticut, I'm not sure why one hundred and sixty-nine towns need to do everything on their own. There, there are ways, probably, you can pull some resources together and try to manage certain things.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'll, I'll keep you posted.
Did you look at it?
If you come up with anything good.
Roche, just looking at, for that right now, anything specific that you've seen that you might be able to take advantage of right away, or you just basically having those discussions to try and figure out?
I'm having those discussions. You know, so for example, I've talked about, I'm, I'm picking this one. I'm, I'm picking this one because one town brought it up, a building department, right? If, if they can split a position half and half. So one town pays half so that you don't have to have a full-time person here. And other, another town brought about, do we all need to have animal control? Can one town do it and you, you pay for it? I'm interested in pursuing that. But this takes, we, some time ago, we reached out to New Britain. I'm told they are right next to our facility, but didn't, they were no, didn't get any legs. No pun intended with the animal control. Right? So we'll keep trying. It'll be good if we can get something.
Arosh, what towns are, are you working in concert with again? Withersfield, Rocky Hill, Cromwell?
Newington.
Newington.
Yeah, and, and Berlin, of course. So there are five towns.
One thing, Arosh, one thing comes to mind is, you know, maybe it can, thinking about large scale or small scale building proj- projects, because I'm thinking about the jail cells. You know, there was a, you know, possibly some savings when we were putting out to bid the jail cells, right? You know, we had two other towns that were going to do the same thing. Some of that fell through, but you know, I think there may be some discussions. You could put some thought to bid, maybe there's, you know, two or three of those towns may be thinking about the same project.
Yes, yeah. One, one other thing that I, I think John, you asked a question or Mike, maybe you did. We are planning for our POCD, the Plan of Conservation and Development. And there is a town here, and I forget whether it was Cromwell or Newington. They are also lining up with ours. So the first part of that requires a lot of data gathering from, from a regional state. Gathering that requires you to hire an expert to get that data. Generally towns hire a consultant, but something like that, it's not town-specific. You can actually share that data and hire one person and the town can split the cost. So I, I think if you, if you think hard enough, there are ways you can do it. People always say, oh, it's just 10,000, it's 5,000, it's 20,000, but it adds up, right? So we'll try to think of these things and I've talked to my department heads about it. But so far, we've been relatively quiet in that front and try to get more responses from them as well.
Well, thanks, Arosh.
And then next meeting, we will bring a, a discussion item on the police pension. As you recall, we talked about SEMAs, the Connecticut Municipal Employees Retirement System, pros and cons of that. But then after that, we agreed to look at the Branford model. It's, it's sort of taking the current funds that are available in the defined contribution plan and trying to come up with a model that would support a pension. Again, the objective here is to try and retain some of the police officers who are leaving for other towns where they have pensions. So we have a preliminary model, some actual analysis. We'll bring it up next week. Kevin over here and we can talk about that and see where we want to go with that. That's it in terms of updates, but in terms of staffing, Helen Malinka, our director of the library, she's announced her retirement after many years of service at the, with the town of Berlin, April 1st. And it's not, she said it's not an April Fools joke. She is going to retire. So we will miss her and we will certainly try to update the job description and try to replace, find a replacement for her. Keep you posted when that happens. That's all I have. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Hey, Roche, two, two, two quick things. Remember we, I don't know if you had a chance to look at this, the mailbox policy, remember I told you I'd gotten a call from a resident about, she was concerned, unfortunately, you know, elderly lady, I believe, and alone, living alone, about replace, you know, the, the service to actually replace the mailbox and post. And I, I forgot, what, what were the, I forget the figure. I know we just updated the cost, but.
I forget too. Yeah, so we called around and tried to see what other towns were doing.
Right.
I have the data. So it's all over the place, but most towns in general, I'd give you the hat, would pay them to replace it. There were some towns that would say if, if he can, if they determine that the snowplow actually hit the mailbox, then they would pay to replace it. But no town says if the slash pushed it away, all of them pretty much pay something for them to get it done. So.
Do you, you know, I don't remember, if anybody remembers, I don't remember what we opted to, right? Then we.
I actually have it in front of me. I.
Oh, good.
The nerd scheme back in the minutes from last, last meeting. It's up to $35 per mailbox and or $40 per post.
So, so.
Seventy-five bucks total.
Seventy-five. I wonder, in discussing with this resident, I, I, I mean, I know it's very difficult. It's very, I guess, difficult to come up with any kind of formula. But I wonder if we just, if everybody has, is interested in it, maybe up that to maybe making an even hundred dollars to give somebody a little bit of money, 25 towards, you know, either hiring somebody or helping get the, get it installed, actually. I don't know if that, that doesn't seem like a big lift. Or more, whatever you guys think, but I, I just, you know, and I kind of discussed that with the homeowner. And she says, oh, you know, any, any little bit would help me, of course, and I'm sure everyone too. And I don't, I don't think we, as I recall, right? Then, then the, the increase in cost based upon our, our average was what, like $1,200 a year? And I think it was going to up it to 2,100, something like that, Arosh, if I, is that in there, Mike? I, I think we wasn't going to change much. Yeah, I know we, I know we came up, it would up a little bit based upon our average year, whatever we replace, or whatever we damage, obviously. See it anywhere? I'm trying to find it myself here. I don't know where we.
No, talks about 35 and 40 there. That's it.
Okay, so, I mean.
The only other thing that you said is that there's approximately 50 mailboxes a year that are damaged. So that's where you were increasing, you know, know about that.
Right. Well, yeah, I, I thought we had an average, from what I remember, I thought it was an average of 1,200 a year costs and, and the, with the increased price, we were going to be at 12, at 2,100 or 1,200, something like that. I, I, I can't remember exactly, but.
Well, if you go 50 at 75, it's more than that, right? 50 at 75 is 37.50. 50 mailboxes at 75 bucks a pop.
Yeah.
So if you, if you do.
If we made it, what if we made it an even hundred for, which would include, I guess, I would break it out with the, you know, the box, the post and some charge for replacement. If they've got to get some tools or get someone to help them. I mean, it costs more than that to get somebody to come fix it, but giving them a little bit more, I don't know, for a hundred dollars, it seems fairly reasonable to me based upon it's not a large chunk out of our budget certainly and might help some homeowners that, that is an additional cost to them. What do you all think? A hundred bucks even? I don't know.
I'm good with that, Mark.
Okay. What do you all think?
Anybody else?
Yeah, that's okay with me.
Didn't we just go to 75?
We did, we did, Peter. Yeah, we did. And I, I mean, I listened to this lady and I mean, she made some good points. And I, I, I don't, I mean, you know, I mean, it's based upon a couple of calls I've had and similar questions on that. So I don't know, a hundred dollars does not seem unreasonable. And of course, I, you know, as we know, every year it's different based upon the snow. And I know the plow drivers are doing the best they can, but it's, it's inevitable. And I, I think it's a kind of a, a, a minor service we, you know, a minor reimbursement we give to our residents and an admirable one to, to, to help them out a little bit. I don't think a hundred dollars, if we raise it another 25, is a budget buster for, you know, between three and four grand maybe, depending upon how many boxes we have. Seems pretty fair to me. We have, you know, our town has a lot of rural boxes, as we know. So it's a quantity that gets damaged, but it does, the damage, the, the yearly damage does not seem overwhelming. I don't know how, any other way to look at it. I, I know what you said, Arosh, where you have to look at if the plow actually hit it. That seems very difficult. That, that was plus of more by the time you went out to, to, to look at boxes, how do you like to, you know, take a picture of it? Oh, let's see, I think a plow hit it or the snow hit it. You're never, you're never going to answer that question, but what are the rest of you guys think? Do you want to think about it or put it on the agenda next meeting and take a vote?
I, Mark, just taking a quick look at the cost of a mailbox. I mean, a low estimate is $50 to $130. I mean, that's a low estimate to replace a mailbox and a post. And that doesn't cost the installation. That's just material. So I don't think a hundred dollars is a lot of money for a mailbox.
No, I know. I think it's pretty fair for the whole.
It's up to you guys.
May I?
Yeah.
May I suggest that we'll make it formal, put it on an agenda item. This will give you some time to think about it.
Sure.
And I'll, I'll also do the write-up of the, what we found, what the other towns are doing.
Yeah.
So that you have it as a background before you make your decision. You know, yeah, I mean, some, some of the towns were careful not to do too much because then people don't fix their mailboxes. Wait till the snowplow comes and have the town fix it. So the government, get off, I'm sorry. So I'll bring it back and you decide what you want to do.
It sounds good. Appreciate that. And one final thing, Arosh, so.
Yes, sir.
Somebody mentioned this to me about, and I know one of the bridge replacements we're talking about is Kensington Road, right? By the post office, I think.
Yeah.
That, that goes on the railroad tracks there. So somebody, and the police commission didn't know about it, because I checked. I don't know if the police department themselves knows, but they, they were talking about closing that road for eight months, Kensington Road and that area there, which would be quite a devastating closure. I have, is that what we're considering? Do we, I don't know. I don't remember. I know that's other bridges we're looking at. I thought that was more of a rehab than a full replacement, but what, do, do you know anything about that?
I don't know the final word. They were, they were one side at a time, but you're going back and forth the DOT on whether it's a replacement or not.
Okay.
I have not heard anything from Public Works. I'll be happy to report back or have Mike give you a report next, at the next meeting.
Yeah, please. I, I don't, I don't want that decision just to be made in a vacuum. They're going to close the road for eight months. That's a very busy road, as we know. It's an important part of town there. So that doesn't seem like the best decision to me. But if they haven't even decided what they're doing with the bridge yet, I guess we wouldn't even know that information.
Yeah.
So whatever we can find out in the next meeting, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
That's, that's all I have. So on to special committee reports, we have, I guess, the Gulf Commission meeting, we already briefed that one. I don't think there was any others. And on to council communications.
No, hold on, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, sorry. Yes, sir.
Roche, you know, I sent an email response to your information about the, the grant money. I don't know if we necessarily have to have a fields committee meeting right away. Maybe that's something in March. Maybe you should let them meet first and, and with that special committee and see where that goes.
Yeah, that's fine.
But just so everybody knows, I let Peter and Mike flip a coin to see who's going to be our representative on that committee. And I think Peter, Peter won that coin toss.
Nice, Peter. Yeah, that's a big win, Peter, right? Yeah.
Who said I won it?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Council Communications, what do you, ladies and gents have?
Good.
Good.
May I, may I interrupt, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Going back to the previous subject. Donna Bouvet, the Parks and Rec, appointed her to represent. And then Mr. Bouvet from Public Building Commission and Adam Salina is from Board of Fed. So that's what we have so far, just FYI.
Okay. Good. Okay. Any council communications, anyone? Hearing none. We'll go on to acceptance of minutes, February 2nd. Take a motion.
Okay, I do see any problems here. So I'll make a motion to accept the town council meeting minutes from February 2nd, 2021.
Thanks, second. I second the motion. Any other comments or questions on those minutes? Hearing none. All is in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And now, so our executive session's coming up. We have to get this call correct and call it on another line, right?
Yeah, so before you hang up.
Yes.
I just texted a calling number.
Okay.
To, it's a, it's a phone number. We couldn't do it because we didn't have a time to do it. So just the council, myself. Ben, Jack and Anders.
Okay, so yeah, we'll, okay, so we'll go ahead and we have that motion, I guess, to go on executive session. And we've invited our guests in.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to go into executive session pending litigations with Connecticut General State Statute, Section 1-200, Sixth Part B, Strategy and Negotiations with respect to pending claims or pending litigation, reobvista litigation.
Okay, second on that. All right, so moved. Then we have our invited guests. So we'll go ahead and end this call and call in on the number that Arosh texted to us. Okay, see you in a minute.
Right, thank you. Good night, Kate. Good night, Kate. Bye. You want to hang out? You're on mute, by the way. You're still on mute. That's okay. I'm going to call.